I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you stand for the presentation of colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. This time I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Now, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's time for the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by recognizing the Inca High School FFA team. They competed nationally in Indianapolis last week, and they not only received a gold medal, but they posted the best result ever achieved by a North Carolina agricultural team. They had a fifth place out of 45 states that had teams represented there. So, Board, we will be inviting them to a future meeting, Mr. Queen, to recognize them in recognition in some, one of our upcoming month sessions. I want to also publicly express appreciation to Mars Hill University and President Floyd for including Buncombe County students in their local lie-in promise, and that guarantees a 50% off tuition if our students so choose to attend. This is certainly a much appreciated decision on Mars Hill's part that potentially could be quite impactful to a number of our students' post-secondary opportunities. So, a big thanks to Mars Hill for including us. Because it is International Education Week, it's an opportunity to recognize our K-5 dual-language programs across the county. They serve 649 students, 35 teachers, and those 35, 35 teachers actually represent a total of 10 countries internationally. As well, I want to extend kudos to the 11 teachers and administrators in Buncombe County that currently hold the North Carolina Global Educator Badge. I don't see, uh, let's see, I don't think Sherri's here tonight, but I certainly want to recognize the great job she's doing with our global education program. Yesterday, across the county, we held morning and afternoon early bird sessions for kindergarten tours, and I understand we had a very strong turnout of parents and future kindergarten enrollees, and thanks to Jennifer Reed and our elementary principals and specialists for their efforts to make this a success. I don't know how many years is this, this is year two, so it's been, year one was a success, and it sounds like this may even be bigger, right Jennifer? Good. While we remain waiting for a 2019-2020 budget from the state, I want to share some recent data with you. Last year's per pupil expenditure for our school district, Buncombe County Schools, was at $9,977. That ranked us 50th out of 115 school systems. This amount designated for each of our 23,600 student-plus included local, state, and federal funds. It did not include child nutrition dollars. We also became aware that 90.5% of our total operating budget for 2018-19 was devoted entirely towards staff salaries and benefits. And I've been reporting the budget for a number of years, and I know that's the highest percentage total that we've, we've had in Ms. Frisby probably the last 10 years easily, correct? Speaking of salaries, we have two bills that were approved by the legislature that are now in front of Governor Cooper for consideration. One is tied to the teacher step increase. It's also tied to principal raises, and while the second bill includes teacher pay increases and bonuses, also includes central office and non-certified personnel percentage rate increases. So, we're going to be watching that very closely. Ms. Frisby and I both, that's the first, that's how we greet each other in the morning. Have you heard what's going on in Raleigh regarding those bills? Also want to just take a second to thank Chief Howard Benningfield for facilitating a wonderful groundbreaking ceremony. We have a new branch of the Inca Fire Department that's going to be built at the Inca Intermediate School or adjacent to the Inca Intermediate School campus. I want to thank Mr. Queen and Madam Chair Franklin, and did we have any other board members that had an opportunity to go to that ceremony? Very well done, and Mr. Queen, would you please express certainly my thanks to, to the chief for, for all that work? That's exciting from, especially from a safe school standpoint, to have that resource that close. I want you to check your calendar for the All County High School Chorus Concert. That's going to take place Tuesday, November 19. It will begin at 7:00 PM, and it'll be held in the downtown First Baptist Church Assembly. So, I hope you can make it. That's always a wonderful concert, and we've just got so much to be proud of in terms of arts across this entire county. And in closing, a reminder that this upcoming Monday is a holiday in recognition of Veterans' Day. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, the All County, what time on the 19th?
7:00.
7:00.
7:00, thank you.
Won't we be at the conference?
Yeah.
Uh...
That when we come back?
That's the day I'm coming home.
Okay.
I'll make sure I'm back by 7:00.
I had November, Ms. Swanger, make sure I haven't made a boo-boo Tuesday, November 19th.
Uh-huh. We're, the Board's Conference, School Board's Association Conference is that week, and while we're multi-talented, we cannot be two places at one time. It's time for the action agenda, and Ms. Frisby, do any board members have questions for Ms. Frisby and her?
Madam Chair, the curriculum feature?
I just skipped the curriculum feature.
You missed me.
Okay, it's going to be a great night. Thank you. Ms. Swanger, it's your turn.
The chorus concert is on Tuesday, the 19th.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Dr. Baldwin, members of the Board. Monthly, our directors work together to update and review parts of the strategic plan that you put in place several years ago, or last year, actually. Time flies. Tonight, we want to focus on instructional technology. You are so willing to support the one-to-one initiative that we began many years ago, and I think it's important for the, for us to reflect on the learning that has taken place by principals, teachers, and students as a result of using those devices, but using those devices at times that cause for using a device. It really is bigger than that, and it involves personals, personalized learning. So, just today, our principals were involved in learning walks in a couple of our schools, and we'll continue this work tomorrow. So, the point is, we're always learning how to better use devices, but more importantly, how do we personalize learning for children? When you look at the strategic plan, technology is involved in academic excellence, the leadership development, as we witnessed today with our principals conducting walks through SD's and Valley Springs, family and community engagement, how do we use those devices within our community and help parents feel comfortable, and then, more importantly, the safety initiatives that Mr. Pace, our Director of Technology, has been so instrumental in leading. So, we wanted to reflect on some of that work this evening. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Pace to come forward. He has some guests with him this evening, and you're going to get a snippet about what's happening as we move forward to become better digitalized learning.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Dr. Baldwin, members of the Board, certainly want to start by saying thank you for this opportunity to talk about the future. It's always important that we're looking towards the future, Madam Chair, like you were doing just a moment ago.
Yeah, trying to get through an agenda.
Well, we want to, like Wayne Gretzky used to say, be, we want to skate to where the puck is going to be, and so anytime you're talking about technology, you know, you have to continuously look towards the future. And so, tonight, we want to take an opportunity to talk about the future and personalized learning, specifically empowering teachers and principals, assistant principals, coaches, building administrators, to lead personalized learning. And so, I have a number of guests with me today, and here's the quick agenda. So, the first thing I want to do is read a snippet from North Carolina's ESSA Act. In other words, what does the law here in North Carolina say about personalized adaptive learning? And then, we want to define personalized learning in terms of four pillars. Jennifer Hand, our Digital Learning and Media Specialist, is then going to walk you through what it looks like in practice. We have one of our digital, awesome digital learning facilitators here tonight, Wendy Fusco, who's going to talk to you about personalized plans, digital learning plans, for each and every teacher here in Buncombe County Schools, which is an effort the digital learning team has taken on this year, and I'm so proud of them for the work they're doing there. And we have a teacher joining us from North Buncombe Middle School, social studies teacher, Chris Brown, to talk about what that's meant at the school level. And then, I've invited Dr. Pinkerton to talk to us about the principal, assistant principal, personalized professional development. And this is, this is hard work. It is not easy to personalize professional development, just like it's not easy to personalize learning. Mr. Amos Fodchuck, the CEO of Advanced Learning Partnerships, will tell us about the work we're partnering with them on around leadership and professional development, and then I'll talk a little bit about the challenges and the opportunities before us. So, North Carolina's law in terms of ESSA states, "North Carolina promotes new strategies that translate into emerging initiatives. Once shown to improve outcomes for students, such promising practices will be scaled and replicated into proven programs across the state. By continuously innovating and improving at each step, North Carolina will create adaptive environments for personalized digital age learning. Schools will support individualized professional development of educators and empower these professionals to adopt their own innovative ideas and strategies for instruction. In our classrooms, personalized digital age learning will allow students to determine the pace at which they learn and will inspire students to take ownership of their preparation for their own path to success through an immediate, through an immediate career, post-secondary education, or both." So, I emphasize a lot of words that are vocabulary in terms of personalized learning, but, so, the state as a whole in North Carolina is where we are in terms of personalized learning. You have to take some risks, you have to be innovative, and just as North Carolina says, you know, we want to scale and replicate things that work. So, that is the work that we're currently involved in here in Buncombe County Schools. And so, the state of North Carolina, in partnership with other organizations, has taken a shot at defining personalized learning in terms of four pillars. So, you have learner profiles, or a student having a profile that documents and stimulates self-reflection on his or her strengths, weaknesses, preferences, and goals. You have individualized learning paths, a student pursuing an individualized learning path that encourages him or her to set and manage personal academic goals. You then have competency-based progression, a student following a competency-based progression that focuses on the ability to demonstrate mastery of a topic rather than seat time, et cetera. And finally, flexible learning environments, a student's learning environment being flexible and structured in ways that support individual goals. So, those are the four pillars of personalized learning. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Jennifer Hand, and she's going to talk to you about what it looks like in practice and what we've seen by visiting pilots in Charlotte Meck, Catawba, Newton Conover, as we've moved forward.
Thank you. Good evening. We've had the opportunity to visit Shufford Elementary recently and Charlotte Mecklenburg to see what they're doing with personalized learning, because they've been doing it for a few years now, and they started slow, but they have had great success. Their test scores have increased significantly in the first year and are continuing to rise, and they attribute that to personalized learning and the, and what they're doing around personalized learning. The first thing, the pillar I wanted to talk about was the learner profiles. They have very strong learner profiles that show what their students are about, things they like, interests they have, where they are with regards to standards, so that they can provide learning that moves them to the next level. So, this is an example of one of their learner profiles that they have. Students are very much involved in creating those learner profiles, so teachers can get to know their students and know what they need. Students are given voice and choice in the classroom, so everything is based on standards. I want to say that first, okay? That's important, it's critical to the personalized learning, but within that, students have voice and choice and the ability to choose how they show mastery. They have individual, individualized learning paths, so the teachers break down and unpack the standards, and teachers said that this was the most important piece to the personalized learning, is that they very, go very deep into the standards and unpack them for the students. The students know all of the parts of a standard, so they know what they need to learn, and then they get to choose in different ways how they show mastery. So, these are some examples. These individualized learning paths can look different, so they're not always the same. So, at the different schools that we visited and different counties, they, they have chosen different ways to show the learning paths. So, you'll see this one's more detailed. This is a student that is in third or fourth grade. This one is for a younger student, so it can look a little bit different depending on their age and their ability to manage their path. This one here is a must-do, may-do. Some schools in Charlotte Meck had a must-do, may-do, so the teacher would say, "You must do these things, and then you may do these other things." So, this is a starting point for doing individualized learning paths. This is another pathway that is based on their level, novice, apprentice, practitioner, et cetera. So, students know where they are, and then they, they follow the instructions based on what level they are for that particular standard. So, there are different ways that personalized learning pathways can look. It's competency-based progression, so students are given the standard, they know the standard, they know all the pieces of the standard and where they are, because a student might have mastered part of a standard but not all of it, so they, their activities are based on where they are within that standard. So, this student is, I think he was kindergarten, and he is scanning a QR code to get to the instructions and activities that he needs to do. You'll see that he's marked off the ones that he's done, and when I talk to students at Shufford, they could tell me exactly what was happening. So, I would say to them, "Do you have time to talk?" And they'd say, "Well, I'm ahead. I'm ahead of where I'm supposed to be," and that's a third grader telling me that he knows his schedule, and managing his own learning. They have a win board at Shufford that they use, and this allows students to spiral back. So, the next week after they've done a standard, if they haven't mastered it, this win board allows a student to put their name where they need help, and then they can do more activities in order to achieve mastery. So, if they don't do it in the timeframe that was initially set out, this allows them to choose to continue to learn about that standard. Flexible learning environments, we saw a lot of classrooms that had multiple areas for students to learn, so there might be a desk or tables, there might be beanbag chairs, there might be a couch, there might be just the floor. Some were using technology, some were not using technology, if that didn't fit what they were doing. So, students were doing different things within the same classroom, so they might be working on science, social studies, math. It depended on what they needed, and so it's what they need, when they need it, in the way that they need it to learn. So, here's another example. These are students on the floor, but that's how they wanted to learn at that time, so they were working. You'll see kids collaborating, some were working in groups, some were working in pairs, some were working individually. The teacher is a facilitator in the classroom, so there's a lot of conversation. The teacher is checking in with students, they're coming and asking, "What do you need? How can I help you?" They're giving them support, so it's not that the teacher is not there, they are there, but they're providing support to students when and where they need it. Okay? These were some of the takeaways that we had from our Shufford visit. I spoke to teachers, and they said they felt like they were better teachers because they had time to unpack the standards in a very deep and meaningful way, and so they were constantly talking about the standards, talking about what the students need, and they felt like they were stronger because of it. So, that was really important and a focus. Students had ownership of their learning, you could talk to any student at any time, they could tell you exactly where they were, exactly where they needed to go as far as what they were learning. They also were articulate, and there was a common language across the school. So, as students progressed from kindergarten through fifth, this was an elementary, they had the same language at every grade level with regards to personalized learning. The win board allowed students to spiral back to work so that they, if they had not mastered something, they could continue to work and master it. We also asked about parents, and they said parents had a much clearer understanding of what their students were doing in the classroom, because the students could articulate that. They weren't saying nothing, they could tell them exactly what they were doing in the classroom, so it was really powerful to see. So, Wendy now is going to talk a little bit about our digital learning plans, our personalized digital learning plans for teachers. We met as a group and as a department and decided our, our teachers have had devices for a while, and so have our students, and we wanted to make sure that they were moving to the next level of use in the classroom. So, we created the digital personalized digital learning plan. Sorry, it's a mouthful. Wendy?
Good evening. The digital learning plan allows all of our teachers to personalize how they want their professional develop delivered. As learning, as digital learning facilitators, we are meeting with them individually or as grade levels to see what they want their goals to be for this digital learning plan for the school year. And we're able to meet with them, help them grow, because like our students, our teachers are at different levels in their digital knowledge, skills, and expertise. We're past the point of introductory technology skills for many, and yet some still need that introductory support because technology changes so rapidly. With the digital learning facilitators having the goal of meeting with every faculty member within Buncombe County Schools, and there are many of them, the digital learning plan has been very powerful, because it's allowing us to have conversations with these teachers about their needs and their individual needs. It's allowed us to truly know where they are, where all of them are, and where they desire to be. It's also allowed us to discuss their learning styles and best match our teachers with professional development and support that fits their needs. So, while some want their professional development to be online, others say, "Oh, no, please come and work with me and help me." And one of the teachers that I'm getting the privilege to work with this year is Chris Brown out at North Buncombe Middle, so I'm going to let her speak about that, even though I'm supposed to show you the digital, I talk and forget to click. They were given a template and, to guide them, but they had full control over what information went on this, they customized it, and then we have access to it, to reference it, to know how can we support each and every one of them. And there will be more information about the digital learning plan in March at the March Board Meeting. I told him I would do my best to remember that.
I sometimes think that if I have to go to one more training where I have to learn how to use my smartboard one more time, I might scream, kind of like the look the children give us when we say, "And we're going to make a PowerPoint," or "We're going to do a Google Slide," or whatever we have going on. And so, when Wendy was at the school...
Last week?
Two weeks ago, we were talking about stuff, and she said, "Well, we need to find something new to do." And so, we talked a lot, and she came out, and we made some word art on the computer, and I got work from kids I haven't gotten work from all year. Sorry, Dr. Johnson, it's just the truth. They were so excited to do this thing, and then we got to talking some more, and then we're going to work on a project in a little bit with using some AR cubes in the classroom that I saw that Leslie Fisher had, was using, and so we're going to try to do more things that the kids haven't done before, because just like we don't want to do the same thing over and over again, they don't want to either. And so, she's a very good resource, and I know I'm not the only one that thinks that, that you have given us, because we don't have time to go to all the conferences and all of the things to find the stuff, so she does it, and then she brings it to us, and my kids are really grateful that they don't have to make any more PowerPoints.
So, talk about a mind shift today. Our principals had an opportunity to have a little bit of a mind shift, because typically your teachers are overachievers, and then we move into an administrator role, and we're still overachievers. And so, when they asked us to host the first meeting today at SD's, I was like, "Okay, what does this need to look like?" You know, like, "What, what do you want us to be doing when you come to our school?" And I was trying to really box it in, and they're like, "No, no, it's just got to be personalized, it's whatever they want to see, whatever they want to do." Well, I have a group of very high-achieving teachers, and they were very nervous when I said, "Hey, there's about 40 people that want to come walk through our building, but it's going to be okay. Just take a deep breath, it's okay." And so, then I tried to explain to them, "This is PD for our principals," and voice and choice was what we got to do today. We were able to walk through a building and kind of talk to each other and have collaborative discussion about what we were seeing that was, might have been a problem in another school, and what were we doing in our school that was helping that problem. Principals got to talk about schedules. We were looking at schedules together today. I had a principal come out at the end and say, "Hey, I noticed that you have lunch at this time for this group." It just, it gave us an opportunity to really collaborate with each other on things that we do not usually get a chance to talk about, and we felt empowered. We felt like we had a little bit of flexible seating, flexible time together, and time just to collaborate and learn from each other today. We do have a picture here of a couple of the administrators in our classrooms. So, it was a good day, and I felt everybody showed up, and everybody was a little apprehensive, like, "What are we supposed to be doing, because you know we're overachievers, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and we're getting an A on it, okay?" But then it was kind of like Amos talked to us and said, "Hey, this is about you today. Think about what you're wanting to find out today that's going to support something that's heavy on your heart, that you're thinking about in your building, that you might want to improve on. Think about that teacher that you might be trying to help out, think about that student, and look at it through that lens and take some time for yourself." And I appreciate everyone here giving us, giving the principals the opportunity to work together and have our own personalized professional work together and have our own personalized professional development because it is, it has been awesome today. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amos Fodchuck. I'm from Chapel Hill, North Carolina, by way of Virginia and North Carolina, and France, and China, and South Korea, and Canada, where I've served as an educator or as a, as a learning educator throughout the last 20 years of my career in education. I had no idea that today I would be leading a professional learning and consulting firm, and somehow it's happened. My colleagues and I work across the United States and Canada in service to communities like yours, where our mission is to serve the vision of each community and to build the professional capacity of the leadership, which includes teachers and principals, district administrators, coaches, community. And our service to your community is to support the strategy that you have and to help the professional learning of your leaders. And so the trust that you've invested in us to facilitate a small piece of this is a form of professional learning that is very common across forward-leaning school systems where principals, teachers, and coaches don't have to leave their buildings, that they can stay in their buildings, they can learn from one another through a sequence of protocols and norms that allow them to focus on innovation that meets the needs, the culture of their communities, and not something that they see on a, on a newspaper or at a conference. And given the work that we lead, I just want to give you a very short snapshot of what I see as an outside educator. I see a community that's very focused on its own priorities and is not being distracted, nor is it being prioritized by a national trend. Personalized learning has been around for a long time. Very often, it's branded by vendors as opposed to communities. And so what I see here is a community that's taking a slow and intentional approach to framing a vision that meets the needs of this community, not, not somewhere else. I also see an investment in professional learning that walks the walk. You can't ask teachers to personalize learning if the leaders who oversee their, their progress haven't taken the same risks and aren't taking the same development around their own learning as they are asking others to. And so where your school system stands currently is in a very strong position of strength, working carefully to identify a common language of, an implementation that is reasonable and that's aligned to the best practices that are already in place and that are making the investments where it should be in its people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amos. So there are certainly challenges in terms of incorporating personalized learning and being innovative and scaling innovative practices that are successful. But there are also opportunities there as well. So a few of the challenges that we, we certainly recognize. First and foremost, standards-based, mastery-based grading is a sea change, and it's something that, you know, we'll have to really look at and, and move slowly. It's a, you know, it's something totally different in terms of a grading model. And there are some limitations with Power School in that to move to a mastery-based grade book, you have to do it for an entire school as opposed to being able to do it for one classroom or a department. But I'm confident that we'll find and figure out ways to overcome those challenges. You know, having potential for a report card only at the end of the course is different. But of course, there's progress reporting available anytime. Parent portal or access to the student grade book online is on the rise and pretty dramatically in the last couple of years. The learning management systems now are adding standards-based grade books. If you look at the next slide, you'll see an example here from a, a learning management system, Schoolology, which was just bought by Power School. And they have a new standards-based grade book. So you can see, you know, it's, it looks a lot different than an 89 or a 92 in a specific subject. So, you know, a student may be developing or may have already mastered a subject in the first week or two weeks or nine weeks, et cetera. And so, you know, there's a significant, you know, difference in terms of, of what the grade book itself might look like in the future. Learner profiles, we've talked about, you know, the, if you're a teacher and you know your students really well, then you're going to make the content, the curriculum, relevant to that student. And learner profiles can help with that. And we certainly, you know, will, will have pilots going on in terms of looking at different ways to do that. Sometimes it's as simple as paper notebooks. And there are, of course, options to do online as well, and management systems are adding that capability as well. So obviously, funding is always a challenge, providing enough support in the building. You know, the digital learning facilitators are amazing, but there are only six of them. Flexible furniture, you know, furniture is very expensive. So, you know, changing a middle school classroom that has 30 desks, you know, that, you know, that's not inexpensive to do. So we have to be creative there. Time is a challenge, but, but also an opportunity in terms of professional development, time for that in the calendar, collaborative planning time. You see, we're moving to learning walks already with the principals and, and others. We also are working on establishing teachers that are trailblazers, digital trailblazers, and them being able to share what, what they're a trailblazer in on their door so other teachers can come in and observe them, talk to them about what they're doing. And then we know we're going to, you know, be innovative with pilots. We already have a handful of media coordinators who are piloting or experimenting with personalized learning in terms of the media center. And, you know, that will be expanding. So, you know, it's, it's an opportunity, and it's an exciting time, you know, to be in a position where, you know, school is changing. Some of that is due to technology, of course, but it's really about the people and how we manage and handle change and technology, technology's role in that. So just appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about our personalized learning journey. We're at the beginning. With that, are there any questions?
Board, do you have questions?
I have kind of a 1A and 1B. I see Ms. Austin is here, so I'm going to include her on this. You probably said it, but I may have missed it. Tell me a little bit more, what was, what was or is the Advanced Learning Partnership's a walkthrough? The, the, what happened there? What was that? And I'm seeing that Johnston's on December the 6th. I'm wondering if board members can participate.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
A little more description of what that was?
Sure. So we've met previous to this morning's session in September, late September, and we, we went over a lot of different things, including technology tools, but also tools that you can use in terms of a walk. And each principal and assistant principal and instructional coach had homework to come up with a tool that they can use in four or five walks to collect data on something that they've never thought about collecting data before. And so that was a great opportunity and a chance to share this morning about what they collected and what they learned from that. And then today, when we went through classrooms, so we were organizing groups of four or five, and we had a schedule, so color-coded at Valley Springs Middle School and ABC through K or at SD's this morning. And the groups of four were going through classrooms for 15 minutes at a time, back-to-back, and then a debrief in the middle, and then two more of those. And this is the challenge. So each principal and assistant principal was working on a different thing, something that they wanted to take away from those facilitated learning walks, which is, is different, you know, in terms of maybe an older, not older, but a different PD workshop where, you know, you have a checklist that you're, you know, you're trying to hit. So, you know, it was a challenge to, I think, their, the thought process of beginning the morning. But I think when we met at the end of that and everybody was unpacking, they shared things that they saw that they might not have seen or wouldn't have seen had they been told to look for something very specific. Amos, do you want to add anything to that?
What's your 1B question? Maybe we can answer it at the same time.
Well, 1B was Ms. Austin, who's the principal at Johnston, and she's already motioned to me that I'm welcome to attend on the 6th.
Please do.
So I'm going to put that in my calendar here in just a minute.
The, the, the secret, the secret to this year's work is really to model, facilitate, and eventually gradually release the facilitation of a protocol that will help administrators feel increasingly comfortable visiting one another's buildings. Administrators are so busy and focused on the needs of their, their host schools that it was nice to hear colleagues expressing happiness at visiting a school they hadn't been to in 10 years and giving them an opportunity to see the, the power of learning in another community. So very often, you'll find that simply by participating in a protocol in another building, you'll, you'll have access to different teachers trying different approaches, and you're able to take some of that and bring it back to your school and almost pollinate some ideas that are just primed for their host school. But ultimately, what we want to do this year is model this protocol so that ultimately these principals, assistant principals, coaches can feel comfortable enough to model the protocol for teachers. Because ultimately, what, what we want to be able to empower and normalize is the, the process of learning that can happen daily as opposed to quarterly, and the process of learning that can happen informally as opposed to formally. And so by modeling this, we're helping administrators take small risks in their cohort so that they feel the confidence and the skill to be able to empower that for others.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one question. So am I understanding correctly, then, that our goal is to try to expand this into other areas of professional development for our teachers? Because I liked what you said about, you know, trying to get out of the habit of not just checking a box. And, you know, you were talking about informal versus formal and daily versus quarterly. And I, I think that's actually a way that we could maybe have better use of our teachers' time, is if we can just try to incorporate some of these learning strategies into things that they're already doing so that it's not in addition to. And then bringing in their colleagues to do a lot of the facilitating, I think, is a good idea. But you're right. I mean, I think with our students, like you said, there's kids that didn't, you know, haven't turned to work in all year, but now suddenly they're excited about something that's brand new. Well, I think the same thing could probably be said for teachers who are probably tired of going to the same PD at the same building over and over again. So I, I really like the idea, and I hope that we could really look at this and try to, you know, really get their input and expand on it as much as possible. So thank you for presenting it.
I agree. And to be innovative, I think that's at the heart of this, is encouraging through this personalized learning journey, teachers, building administrators, to innovate. And that's where we're going to come up with powerful practices that we can scale. So that's the ultimate goal.
Well, thank you, Mr. Pace.
Thanks to all.
All right, Ms. Longer, are you still up or you finished? Sorry, I overlooked you. At this time, we're scheduled for public comment, and the table's empty, and there's not any. So we will move on to the action agenda. And the first item is the adoption of the 2019-2020 budget. Do any board members have a question for Ms. Frisbee? And I see some nods. So please come down.
There's always two on this end of the table that are going to ask questions. For sure.
Mine is probably the obvious question, so I'll start. Budget? How can we have a budget if the state doesn't have a budget? I thought we had to wait until they had theirs.
So they did give us allotments, but they were based on 1819 base budget. Because as you recall, when we adopted our interim budget at the end of June, it was only good through November 30th. So we have to have a, a continuing resolution to continue operations. So they waited and they waited, and then finally, you know, we, we needed to do business. So they did give us a base budget based on 1819 information. The only changes-
Even though the state doesn't have a budget, they've just given us enough to have a continuing resolution, knowing that we're going to have to update this once.
That is correct.
Okay.
The only difference is this is based on the projected ADM for 1920, which is a little bit different than 1819. So some of the allotments are different, but, you know, we, we have to carry on business.
So we know our enrollment numbers, we just don't necessarily know what raises will be, what retirement will cost, what health insurance will cost, those kinds of things.
That is correct.
Mr. Bryant?
So the local current expense fund noted an expense to balance this budget, I believe, of 2.768 million. No. 2.768 million is from the county. And my question is, what's our latest communication with them? Because we still have a deficit there, and how does that impact people that are already working as we move forward? Or does this change anything at all? And I, I just would like to know what our latest communication is with the county because we have a pretty clear promise from them that once we got a budget based upon whatever increases they are, those 700-plus FTEs will also be treated the same as what the state budget's going to do for the other employees. So are we in continual talks on that? Do we have some more assurance? Where are we on that?
So I will address part of that question. So the county did appropriate an additional $2.7 million for a 1920 budget. That is reflected in this document.
But that was short of our request, which were based on existing personnel.
And what, what we want to do as soon as we know what the salary and benefit increases are, is that we will do our projections again and see where we are, and then we will have those conversations with the county. And now Dr. Baldwin may have additional comments.
Once that budget, or at least the model that we're looking at now is not a complete comprehensive budget, it's components of the budget. But regardless, for example, the, the two bills that I discussed and I talked about tonight are salary-driven. So clearly, if they are passed, one of the first challenges we're going to have is the recurring funds that will have to be made up and put into a payroll. It's, I appreciate that question because it just underscores the timeline issue. And, and I think that's what tends to be missed when we talk about the challenges that we have with state and local budgets. In the entire state, it is a timeline issue. This is a significant timeline challenge that we will have. For example, if both of those bills are signed by the governor tomorrow, the conversation that you inquired about will take place tomorrow. But we've got to have some specific figures and data in order to know exactly what needs to be requested. And, and that is, that's, that's still, so much of that is still up in the air. Even once the governor signs those bills, we have to determine, okay, what are the legislative requirements now on when, essentially, when is the back pay for those salaries? When are they required to be put in payrolls across the state? And that is a tremendous challenge.
And that was another question I had. Will that be dictated to us by the state of North Carolina? Will that be dictated to us by the state of North Carolina? Or will that be something that might be different from school system to school system across the state?
It should not be different for school systems. It will be a defined date, and it will be. Based on what we're seeing so far in the bills, and actually in the most recent bill that we've seen, is it actually gives a clear deadline date that that payment must be included in that monthly payroll. Ms. Frisbee, am I correct with that?
Right. You know, so November is a challenging month anyway. And so, you know, I've just got my whole team on standby. So as soon as we know the numbers-
Give you a more specific example. And again, Ms. Frisbee and I have had this, as I said earlier, we greet each other with these type of discussions. November 12th, for us, has clearly been the deadline date for us to be able to provide any of that back pay into this monthly payroll. And that is going to be a tremendous challenge. We are not, we do not have an overabundance of our payroll staff to handle this.
You can't do it by the 12th, I wouldn't think. I mean, today's what the 7th.
Oh, no. No, no, no. That's impossible.
Because we don't even know yet. But is what's in front of the governor, I hope we'll address this moving forward if what I understand is correct is correct, but correct me if I'm wrong. What's in front of the governor is principal raises, but what's in there for teachers is simply the step increase without a percentage salary bump. Is that accurate?
Well, the percentage salary bump is there for the principals, but remember, there are two bills that had been approved by the General Assembly in front of the governor. One, as you say, is specific to the step increase for teachers and the principal increases. The second bill addresses the teacher's salary, and it does include rate increases as well as bonuses for teachers. So two separate bills. One primarily addresses teacher salary and non-certified salary and central office salary. The other bill addresses principal raises and steps for teachers.
If you're interested, one is House Bill 377, and the other one is Senate Bill 354. Those are the two.
Would you repeat that, please?
Yes, House Bill 377 and Senate Bill 354.
And then, may I continue? I had one more question.
Of course. I didn't mean it that way. It's so, Deck, I'm frustrating to sit here and listen to this conversation, which is very near and dear to all of our hearts, and we're sitting here poised to do something about it, and we can't do anything.
Our hands are tied behind our back.
Beg your pardon?
Our hands are tied behind our back.
Exactly.
Local current expense fund, I got this mixed up with my last question. Item 4900, use of stabilization funds, $3 million. Do I understand, or re-explain that to us? And is that number going to change depending on what happens at the state of North Carolina, what the governor does or doesn't sign? And with that, what does that leave us? Because we've dropped, I know we've dropped below keeping Board Policy 8100 in place. With this number or escalating numbers, what does that leave us in terms of stabilization?
So approval of this document weighs Policy 8100, and we're appropriating the $3 million to balance the budget. There is just a teeny tiny bit left to help.
That mean?
Less than a million.
Okay.
And this is unaudited. Our audit is not final yet, so that could change.
Well, and it would, it will change because this is, it's going to be impacted some based upon what happens, this conversation here.
Yes.
Have we got enough to cover?
I cannot answer that. I don't know. Until I know the percentages and everything and how the raises will come down, I can't answer it.
So if we don't have enough to cover, what's the next step?
That's the conversation with the county. And I appreciate the question, so I'm going to put more complexity in the answer. The governor has essentially three options in front of him. He can sign, becomes immediate law, and then we evaluate whatever is in those two bills. And the key is the comparison to what we projected when we submitted our budget to the county commissioners. Do those rates, are they right on the money? Was there a slight increase that we missed? If you remember, last year, we really, along with all the other systems in the state, we underestimated the increase, I believe, in our health, the insurance, was it?
Retirement.
Is the retirement rate. The governor can also elect to simply allow them unsigned through, I believe it's November, is it November 11th? Is that when it becomes? Okay, I better check.
He has 10 days from October 31st.
And then it automatically becomes law. The governor could veto. He could basically veto both of those. Then it goes back. And that's where the real dilemma now, because if there is any changes in coming from the General Assembly with those numbers, we're right back into, we really don't know if we need additional funds because the chances are, I think, higher that those rates are going to increase larger numbers than what's currently in both of those bills in front of the governor. So again, it's a timeline issue. That is a wonderful question to ask, but I think it really underscores the dilemma that we're facing right now. And to be quite honest with you, I mean, at least from my standpoint, I feel confident that once we have those numbers, we are ready, along with the county, because they are aware of where things are, because they're impacted with this state budget stalemate as well. But I think there are other issues that maybe take higher priority in giving us heartburn, or certainly Ms. Frisbee is having some stress challenges.
Bad heartburn.
Right.
My intake of chocolate has significantly increased, just saying. I'm a stress eater.
Mr. Bryant?
I'm good. I'll stop there. Ms. Frisbee, did the House Bill 377 that the Senate passed, did that indicate that this raise would be retroactive to July 1? Or is that something that's being discussed in committee?
I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing it's going to be retroactive back to July 1, and it could possibly be effective January 1.
Effective January 1, but retroactive to July 1?
Yeah, it could either be retro back to July 1 or new raises effective January 1.
The act itself, the one that increases the steps, is retroactive to July 1.
Okay.
377.
Did you just say that perhaps the pay increases would be retroactive from July 1 to when it's signed? Or they wouldn't take effect till January 1? Is that what you said?
It is what I said.
Well, that's a mess.
Well, the original budget proposal, not from the governor, but the original thing that was discussed and passed, was the raises were not, no raises were going to take effect until the second half of the school year, until January 1. So they would, and I-
Well, it did, hold on, I just pulled it up.
I think the raise part of what Dr. Baldwin was talking about is kicking in January 1. The step is to be retroactive back.
377 is the steps.
I know you all understand every bit of this, but Mr. Shatley is reading the document.
And it said, 377 says, "The salary increases for principals provided in this act do not apply to persons separated from service. For the 1920 fiscal year, payroll checks issued to employees after July 1 that represent payment of services provided prior to July 1 shall not be eligible for salary increases." Okay. So, but otherwise, I'm looking through it. Otherwise, I think this one would be the steps and where you place on the salary schedule, not increases itself, but where you place on the salary schedule would be retroactive. But I am scanning through it. If I find something different, I'll let you know.
Anybody else totally confused? Oh, Donna Page.
I just have one clarification question. So did I understand correctly that we will have to dip into the general fund?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, is your question? Repeat that.
To tap into the general fund balance.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
And that is, so then we're forced to trust that the county commissioners will follow through.
Well, we're forced to do that all the time.
Well, I understand that. But how do we, how do we make that up?
That is an outstanding question. You know, we always try to implement cost-saving strategies and things like that and have some of those that, once all this is said and done, we hope we can implement. But, you know, it's, it's a challenge. It will be a challenge.
And we're already bare bones.
AB Tech went to the commissioners because of their fund balance. Has been done.
Well, this is, this circles back to my fear and why my original question. The county, at least three occasions since September, has awarded, and I don't know how this money's being funded and when it kicks in. Last night was one, a million dollars to extend the transportation line. All three of the things they've done are new monies that have come from somewhere in the midst of a tax year. Now, are they kicking in, are they voted on now and going to kick in financially next July? Or is it money being spent today? I don't know the answer to that. And that's where my concern is for making sure that what was discussed last April, May, and June, and publicly stated, is in fact actually carried out as it impacts our school And maybe there's, maybe it's all factored in, and hopefully it is, but I have my reservations.
All right. Further comments or questions from the board? All right. After this discussion, I would seek a motion to approve this 1920 budget.
I do have one more question, I'm sorry. Columbo.
Just one more time?
Yeah. So we really don't have a choice, but, I mean, we have to have some sort of continuing resolution at this point, otherwise we don't continue to function. Is that correct?
Correct.
Just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out to the ground.
Now I'm going to get in my dumpy little car and drive away.
Would you give me a motion to approve this?
Yes, ma'am. I move that we approve this budget as proposed.
Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Fairview Elementary School renovations project, we're seeking to accept the GMP and authorize C Mar to proceed. That's Mr. Fairly. Do we have questions for Mr. Fairly?
I do.
Uh-huh.
Should I just nod my head before you get to the point where you ask?
Well, you notice I always turn to the left to see where the questions are.
We should start sitting over on that side path so she doesn't get that problem.
No, no, no. That would confuse the old woman. Thank you, Mr. Fairly. Go ahead, Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Fairly, I have two, one of them, it may be answered in here. So it looked to me like there were two parts of this. There's the construction part, and then there was also a portion for furnishings. And the number that came in is approximately 100,000 less than the budget estimate. So is that money going to be part of what's going towards furnishings? Or what's happening with that additional money that, for the construction part, came in under budget?
Well, the whole project is funded by lottery, so any funds that don't get used will go back into lottery for reuse.
And then with that, I know that several board members have expressed this in a variety of places, but what are we, what can we do to ensure some level of quality of work guarantee as we continue with these projects? We've had some things come up recently where we've just, you know, and at the end of the day, the people impacted are our kids, and the people in those buildings are using our facilities. And are we, is there something more that we as a board could do to help you or something we can do to improve that situation in this project and in other projects going forward?
Could you be more specific?
Well, we're dealing with, we're dealing with issues at two tracks, gymnasium, that we're months beyond when those things were supposed to have been done and completed and turned over to us in a satisfactory condition that aren't. We've held money, but that doesn't seem to be, I'm more interested in getting the job done properly than I am in holding somebody else's money. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can, something we can do to get to a point where we're having to do that less, and there may not be, but that's my general question.
Well, one thing you've already done is authorized use of a C Mar construction manager-at-risk project on several projects. And we, cross your fingers, haven't had those types of problems on the C Mar projects. The smaller projects, you can't really do, it's impractical to do the C Mar-
Because of the expenses associated with it.
-process on those smaller projects. Kind of the one-off, one-task sort of projects. It just is impractical. That's not what that sort of system does. So, you know, we are still in a very challenging construction economy. And, you know, how you get the A-team from a particular contractor rather than a C-team is a challenge. A few things that we try to do is to get out in front, advertise, try to identify the better contractors that we've had experience with so that we're not kind of stuck with a real inexperienced contractor. But even with that, you know, we're a public entity, and if you're a qualified bidder and you're the low bidder, we have a difficult time disqualifying them and go to a higher bidder. Perhaps Mr. Shatley can clarify that, but we've always gone with the lowest qualified bidder. Is there a way to get better bidders?
No, even in the informal range, you know, under half a million dollars, which some of these projects are, you know, like the gym floor, I think it was under half a million. But even in that range or above, if we just do a traditional bid process, we have to go with the lowest bidder. Now, there are at times where we can determine that a bidder is not qualified per the statute. The statute doesn't give us much guidance on that, but one of the things that we can use is past performance with us as one of those disqualifying events if they've not provided good service or good workmanship on the project. But sometimes you put out, you know, you put a job out there that's going to cost quarter of a million dollars or $300,000, and we put the specs out, and for the bid, we've got to go with the lowest bidder. Unless we use an alternative bid process, but as Mr. Fairly said, there is really impractical on the smaller jobs to use an alternative bid process like a construction manager-at-risk or design-build.
We did a design-bid-build process for the Owen High School tennis courts a while back, and that is an alternative bid process. And it has its challenges also, but I'm not sure how to answer that. We, you know, you can, we have to have our boots on the ground watching these contractors at all times and encouraging them to stay on schedule, to maintain quality. And that's the best I know to do. The more you can be on that contract and know- The more you can be on that contractor and know he's being watched, the better chance you have of getting, having a successful project.
At the end of the day, construction involves headaches. Is that true, Mr. Fairley?
I'm sure a lot of our principals would call it more than headaches. It's just, you know, I kind of take it as, I expect things to go wrong. There's very few projects where it flows perfectly, and typically in the beginning, the contractor's given you a schedule that is based on perfection of weather, everything. And he intends for it to go well, but it rarely does.
And the qualifications, Mr. Shatley, are, when we put that together and put that out for companies to participate in a project, we put those qualifications together so we as a school system define what that is?
Correct, we do, but in order to disqualify a contractor, you've got to have a pretty significant reason. Using past experience is potentially, is a good reason, or even past experience on other jobs, if we ultimately know that our contractor not being financially feasible to do the job, you know, they don't have the cash flow, you know, on a large, a lot of times on a larger project, or even doing a construction manager at risk, you know, we'll ask for a balance sheet in the RFP or in the bid process sometimes. But those qualifications are typically put together by Mr. Fairley's office, sometimes with our assistants or whoever, whatever other department of the school district is assisting in that effort.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Fairley. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Fairview Elementary School project, procurement of furnishings. Questions for Mr. Fairley. It's a novel idea that would have furniture, isn't it?
Mr. Fairley, am I correct that all of this is being purchased through state contracts, so there was no reason to bid it, and that the vendor is providing the furniture?
Cooperative purchasing agreements, primarily state contracts, but there are kind of private, if you will, cooperative, pre-negotiated, pre-bid contracts that are out there. And we kind of cherry pick which are the best available out there. So, but the state contract for furniture is probably the largest percentage.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion, do you have a question, Mr. Bryant? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I move that we buy appropriate furniture for the children in our school.
Thank you, Ms. McMahon. Could I get a second?
A second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We certainly don't want inferior equipment in our schools. Sewer line easement adjustments, that's also Mr. Fairley. Do we have questions from the board? Hearing and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Emma Elementary School, Werner Center for Early Learning Memorandum of Understanding. Questions about this. We have discussed this in previous meetings in this project. So do board members have questions at this time? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? District plan for low-performing schools, that's Ms. Swanger. Do we have questions for Ms. Swanger?
Sorry?
Do you want to talk? Did you just come to that microphone for fun, or would you like to enlighten us?
No, I just wanted to see if the board had any questions. This month, we are asking you to approve the plan of support for our four schools. You have directions in your folder how to see those school improvement plans via NCSTAR. If you need assistance with that, please let us know. We'll be glad to walk you through the best we can. And then in December, we'll ask you to approve those plans before submitting to the state.
The information you gave us was quite good.
So we're going to be approving them next time? So what are we doing this time?
You're, you are approving the district plan.
Oh, I see.
That was, that shows what we're, how we're supporting all four schools.
Gotcha.
And then next month, you approve the four school plans after you had a time to review them.
I understand. Thank you.
Can you, can you give us kind of a synopsis of how this came to be? Who were the people in the room or rooms that formulated this?
The General Assembly.
But this is not something from us.
No.
This is what's, this is what's handed to us.
Yes.
And the X's and the dates simply are...
The dates are even. They come straight from GS 115C-10537.
Then what do, what if we didn't approve it?
We would be causing our schools to be out of compliance.
Right, I mean, but, so there's, I get, my question is what, it's dictated to us and handed to us, but we still as a board have to approve it?
The statute does require, requires the local board to approve it, and we, I think we have to send it on the DPI, don't we?
You know, I think it's, the schools have worked very, very hard in making sure their school improvement plans are tight. We, as a district staff, are supporting them to help with learning walks, data review, instructional lesson planning. Those components feel good. There's nothing that we've asked our schools to do over and above what other schools do. They are just being watched in that process, and they have some more, a little more support.
And there was some, what's the term? Disagreement, I think, in the spring and/or the summer over a change in reading evaluation, I believe. What is, what is iStation? Headsets with wired phones for istation?
iStation is the...
Notice the audience.
Where do we begin, Mr. Bryant?
Is the newest tool for monitoring reading progress for K3.
Replacing M-class, yes.
Replacing M-class, which was a different vendor.
But I thought the istation, I thought the last thing I saw, maybe not, was that had been delayed for some amount of time, that adoption.
They delayed when the scores on iStation would take effect.
But not the adoption of its usage?
Not the adoption, no.
And our teachers have been trained.
Our teachers have been trained, and we're learning how to use that tool and use the data from that tool.
As we use the tool.
Absolutely.
We're building this plane as we fly.
That's why it's good to be in the room where it happens, Madam Chair.
Indeed. Do we have other questions?
I will tell you that these four schools are doing incredible work. They are being intentional and having sometimes hard conversations. They are looking at their best practices, their high-impact strategies that we know yield high results. So we had our DPI case manager with us last week, and we had a tour of all four schools, and we were all much impressed to take a DPI consultant, who was a regional person, to visit schools the day after Halloween and see kids working.
And learning was going on.
And learning was going on.
I would argue, not with you, but I would argue with the state of North Carolina, that these four schools have been doing good work.
I agree.
Prior to this year.
I agree. And they're shaking their heads, and they're here this evening, and I appreciate that vote of confidence in them.
I want to take this opportunity to speak for the board and publicly thank you, Ms. Swanger, and your staff for the incredible efforts that you're putting in place for these schools and the teachers and the students in these schools. It's incredible.
We have a great team, thank you. That team's sitting right out there.
I'm not going to ask them to stand or anything.
So our mission is that we want to exceed growth because we know growth will lead to proficiency, because, remember, we all agree that every child should have a year's worth of growth from where they start to the end of the school year. So we do take that seriously, and we can do better on that.
Well, we can always improve.
Absolutely. But we want to exceed growth.
Okay. So could I get a motion to approve this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda are the minutes from October 3, the regular and open sessions, the personnel report, policies for second reading, policy 8350, fixed assets inventory, advisory council request to replace a member, and an advisory council request to add a member. Could I get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On your information agenda, you have policies for first reading, which are policy 1510, 427270, school safety; policy 1510, 42207270R, safety and health program; policy 6315, drivers; policy 6305, safety and student transportation services; policy 2010, board and superintendent relations; policy 2300, board meetings. All that is on the information agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second? They'd just love to stay here. All of you that are in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? I hope you all have a wonderful month, and that Tom Turkey finds you well.